All right, looks like we are in business here. Good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Lunenburg Select Board. Today is Tuesday, March the 12th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the requirements of the meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel, on Facebook Live, on the Public Access Facebook page, and will be uploaded to the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel after the meeting. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion, to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. I'd like to acknowledge tonight that we -- I'm noting that we have a member who's not here, so I'm just letting them know we're live. So tonight, we are -- Selectman Tom Alonso is not with us. Selectman Caesar Nizzolo is not with us, and we are joined by Selectman Lou Franco remotely, who is pinned for us on the back monitor. So we are -- we do have a three-member board this evening. We're going to start with public comments from the board. Do you have any public comments from the board? Selectman Franco.
I have not, thank you.
I have a few related to the budget and potential action item, if I can wait till that part.
Okay. The only other comment I want to offer publicly is that we've received -- you know, there's been an outpouring of requests from parents, which is always good to see, and concerns about the school override budget. So I just want to publicly state that at our last meeting, all members of the Select Board were in agreement to add to this year's warrant and ballot a question on an override. So that is something the board has already agreed to somewhat informally. I think tonight, we will more formally put a placeholder on the warrant, so that way we can have some time to get the language correct over the coming weeks. Do we have any public comments from the public?
Hi, Sarah Cammer, speaking for myself.
Good to see you, Sarah.
I just want to say, my daughter's 11. She speaks two languages. She's a musician. She's a great reader. She loves math. But that's not because of this town or this school system. About five years ago, I stood in this room and shared my concern that the superintendent of schools was cutting the school librarian. They had to, to make the town budget. There were several other cuts, but that one was the one that bothered me most and still stands out. That was Dr. Burnham's first year, and it was also the first time the town manager had limited the school that has healthcare, IT, transportation, and several other costs, including unfunded mandates baked into their budget, and limiting it to a 2.5% increase. I went to finance meetings, school meetings, and town meetings. No one really seemed to care. Parents did not attend town meeting, and the people I looked at at meetings all seemed much older than me. At that point, I unenrolled my child from Lunenburg and went elsewhere. Now here we are, five years into some chaos, perhaps only buoyed from real crisis earlier by COVID and other funds. I want to share my disgust and disappointment at the Select Board's individual and collective commentary regarding a budget override last week, and I encourage you to remember a few things going forward. Children under 18 have a fixed income. They don't have one. They're powerless to vote. And we also have more impoverished kids under 18 than we do who are people over 65 or older. The entire town suffers from the cheapness of the 2.5% levy limit. It doesn't track inflation at all. We're understaffed, and we cannot fill positions. And the crisis in town and in our schools is the entire town's making over time. So I really encourage the members of this board to take the big step of leadership and acknowledge the schools and the town departments all need the money, and fully support the override, instead of stating, "I'll just put it on, see what happens." Finally, I encourage all the parents to bring all of their kids to town meeting and stay all day. I taught my daughter to write her name at town meeting. If you're expecting the usual members of town meeting to vote in your favor for an override without your presence, you are asking for failure. You must go to the meeting, and you must vote when the override ballot comes forward. I'd really like to bring my child back to town. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Do we have any other public comments from the public? Laura? And then Mary.
Hi, Laura Brzezowski, 21 Francis Ave. I am here tonight not as a member of the school committee. I'm here because I want to say the things that I would say if I was not on the school committee, and I was a concerned citizen watching. I am a private citizen. I am a parent of children in Lunenburg schools. As a citizen, I encourage you to please not only add the override to the upcoming town meeting warrant and to the May municipal election ballot, but to please consider publicly supporting the override, so the town can adequately fund its schools. This override is to simply maintain a somewhat normal level of service and to avoid drastic cuts to the schools. This override is not for unnecessary expenses or for out-of-control spending. It is simply an ask for enough money to continue providing the same basic services to our students that we have been providing. This is an ask that I hope our town leaders can get behind and support. I am cognizant that raising taxes by any amount affects our most vulnerable citizens. I am not asking for this lightly. The schools are asking for this amount so that they may continue to fund the schools at the current levels, minus the cuts from federal grants ending that had been planned for. This override will allow the schools to maintain the current level of services without a large amount of cuts to teachers. I am not going to stand up here and lecture on the moral values of educating children in this town, or how education is a cornerstone of democracy, or how the charge of educating the children of our town is one of the central pillars of local government in Massachusetts. I would hope that elected officials would understand that educating our children with a quality education has great value. So instead, I will say, a town lives and dies by its schools. A lot of our tax money goes to the schools, so we, as a town, need to make sure we're getting a decent return on that substantial investment. Most Americans put most of their accrued lifetime of wealth into their primary home. For the people who pay taxes here, their house is their most valuable asset. If we do not adequately fund the schools in the town, that asset is not going to maintain its value. Please, as leaders in town government, make the effort to get us onto a path where we can prioritize educational funding and keep Lunenburg a wonderful, thriving place for its residents. The first step towards that is to add and support this override initiative. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brzezowski. We had Mary? And then Rhonda? Good to see you, Ms. Foyle.
You too. Mary Foyle, 985 Flat Hill Road. I'm actually here, though, because I serve as the President of the Lunenburg Education Association, though I cannot completely divorce myself from being a parent and a resident in this town either. I watched last week's meeting, and I went and rewatched some parts as well. And I'm just here maybe to clear up or give more information. I've spent my 20-plus-year career in education here in Lunenburg, and I can attest to the fact, we've never had a good budget. We have consolidated buildings in the past to save money. We've let go of key positions to save money. Staff has taken zeros. Staff has taken pay freezes in order to save money. I have taught in a classroom with hanging wires. I've eaten lunch with water falling through light fixtures because the building, we kept trying to make do, make do. If you've been in our new building, it's lovely, but it belies the budget that we've been operating under. Assessor funds simply band-aided a problem that we've had for decades. As the LEA, we haven't always agreed with the school committee, but I'm really here to say that this isn't a school committee issue. This is a town of Lunenburg issue. I listened last week, and some of what's being said about town employees, the same thing can be said about public school employees. We are losing people left and right from the town of Lunenburg. The town has depended on its employees to make up cost differences, and your employees simply cannot do it anymore. Townspeople cannot keep expecting the same services and not paying much more for those services. I pay taxes in town. In essence, I pay my salary. Like, I get it. I get the cost differences in there, but we're expecting the same things, but we're not putting forward anything more for that. I can appreciate the financial constraints people are in, but no matter where you sit financially, we have to have the better -- the basic understanding that what you pay is then what you get. You can't get more than what you're paying for. So as people consider -- I hope the override gets on the budget -- on the ballots in town meeting, and as people consider this, I just want them to think carefully. You will only get what you actually pay for. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lazio.
Rhonda Lazio, 181 Reservoir Road. I have a different take on the override issue. If anyone's familiar with what happens to someone when they have a tax lien on their property, what happens is the town seizes your property, and you could be an elderly person and own your home, and if you owe, say, $5,000 in taxes, you could lose all the equity that you have earned in the home. It gets confiscated, not by the town, but they sell it to a company, and you lose everything. And one of the reasons -- I wasn't trying to be a stickler for the rules about following the open meeting law and pointing out the fact that we don't have solid numbers. I feel like I was advocating for those things because what they mean, it gives people more time to prepare for increases in their taxes that I think many people need. And in fact, with no children in the school district and being on a middle-class income, I'll have to consider whether or not I want to stay in this town based on the taxes. So I just think there's two sides, and I also see in the school budget where there are areas where parents could pick up some slack. Specifically, the transportation policy allows, well, guarantees every child a bus to school. Each bus costs like hundreds of thousands of dollars. They could reduce by a bus by -- if people that lived within two miles transported their own child to school. And I think the policy -- when my daughter was in school, I -- they charged bus fees. And all this talk about, you know, not wanting to bring your child before school for banned, you know, sometimes you have to just make adjustments. That's what being a parent is. That's what I always did. I didn't expect the school to give her everything. It's -- most of the person she is is from her family, and I don't see families doing a whole lot. And also, 18%, they have the social-emotional-special class. 18% of students have, I don't know, social-emotional problems. Well, why are we forcing the other 82% to take part in this special? There are just things that I think could be cut, and so, no, I won't be supporting the override. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Lazio. Do we have any public comments on Zoom this evening? Seeing none anymore in the room. Mr. Passios, and then this will be the end of our public comments. Mr. Passios.
Dave Passios, 56 Whiting Street. I am a member of the Finance Committee. I am not speaking as a member of that committee or representing that committee this evening. I am representing myself as a lifelong resident of Lunenburg and someone who has spoken loudly about the school's budgeting practices for better than a decade, probably two decades, and warning that their budgets were not sustainable under the limitations of revenues coming into the town of Lunenburg. And here we are. We've hit the perfect storm. What the solution is, from what most people are saying right now, is to increase taxes. We may be at that point with is we're at a point of no return, but there were better choices and more conservative choices that could have been made in the last 15 years to keep us from getting to this point. And again, I'm not looking to put the town side against the school side, but the town side has budgeted very conservatively for many years, and when we get hit with a $2,000 or $300,000 unexpected drop in revenues in the middle of a fiscal year, we're able to absorb it. That's the type of position that the school district should be in. I understand you try to spend every penny you can on the children, but you also got to protect the town and protect the school's budget against what's happened in the last year. Thank you.
Thank you. So generally, you know, public comments are 15 minutes. Mandy, I see you standing, so you have the full three minutes.
Yeah. Hi, my name's Mandy Gilman, 186 Reservoir Road. I just wanted to say thank you for everyone who continues to engage with the parents in town who are very involved in this, and I really appreciate all of your hard work and thinking through this issue. Obviously, would love the Select Board's full support of the override, but also really just thankful that you guys are -- that you guys -- that this elected board is respectfully engaging with us, because I think that's just really important and part of democracy. So I appreciate that. That's it.
Thank you. All right. We're going to go now to -- I want to turn over to Brian. Brian, what time did you post your meeting at?
Seven.
All right. I want to turn to you so you can call your meeting to order.
So, thank you for reading all that stuff that needed to be read. I'm going to call the -- to order the meeting of the Board of Assessors for this evening. And we'll all introduce ourselves. John Rabbit, 314 Thompson-Harbor Road.
Sarah Cammer.
Brian LaFonte.
Okay.
Thank you very much for allowing us to do that.
Yeah, thank you. And just for the record, you guys were here at seven, and I just didn't call on you until 7:20.
Failed to remind you earlier. I was going to.
All right. So we have you scheduled on our agenda for 7:30, so we will take you at or after 7:30. So we have a 7:15 appointment with the Lunenburg Skate Park update. I was hoping to see some kids back from college today, but all right. Please be sure to state your name, address.
Yeah, of course. Hi, my name's Aiden Moore, 59 Wildwood Road. Unfortunately, I'm the only member who could make it back today. Two of the other members are off playing lacrosse right now. One's back at college, and one's in Florida, so I was the only one who could be here.
We're happy to have you, Aiden.
Oh, sorry?
So we're happy to have you, Aiden.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I'm happy you're letting me here. I'm a freshman at Trinity College. I'm thinking about majoring in econ and poli sci and eventually pursuing law school. So I'd just like to start off by thanking the Board of Selectmen for allowing us to present the first time, and then once again, coming back, and always being extremely welcoming to the Lunenburg Skate Park, and just showing love for the project. I'd also like to thank the Parks Commission, the Parks Department, because we have given them a ton of hassle about the location of the park, and they have always worked with us and are giving us a -- just are being very generous with their help and the land they're allowing us to use. And also, I'd like to thank Lunenburg Public Schools and the town for really, I guess, just allowing all the members of the skate park to have a great upbringing, and really, they were just the pieces that all brought us together and allowed such a project to come alive. So I'd like to, if you could flip to the --
It's going to be on the back screen.
Oh, okay. Perfect. So who are we? It's myself and four other guys. This group is made up of my best friends and I. We all grew up in Lunenburg. We are connected through schools and sports, and eventually, some of us got into skateboarding. And when seventh grade rolled around and the Genius Hour program came alive, we -- well, I'll explain Genius Hour real quick. It was just basically a once-a-week time that the school provided -- allocated to pursue kind of a -- just something that we're -- something that students were interested in. But my friend group, or what is now the Lunenburg Skate Park, really had no idea what we wanted to do, so we just kind of messed around a little bit, tried to make some infomercials and just some funny videos, but eventually stumbled upon the fact that we had nowhere to skate. We had picked up skating not too long beforehand, and I'd like to thank the school again, because we would never have known we needed a skate park if they hadn't kicked us off the property hundreds of times. So, yeah, just having nowhere to go, and also the fact that there's no skate park closer than 25 minutes away, we really had nowhere to go to skate that was legal or safe. So we kind of came to the realization in Genius Hour that it would be awesome to kind of create a spot where not only us, but the town could use wheeled objects, bike, scooters, rollerblades, recreate safely. So, yeah, that's just kind of who we are and how we became Lunenburg Skate Park. So how did we get here? I'll kind of explain the beginning of the project and where we're at, where we are at now and how we got here. So after kind of figuring out this idea that we needed a place to skate, we just kind of brainstormed and came up with the idea that we kind of just wanted like a little concrete pad with maybe a ramp and a rail that we could use. But with the help of our parents and just influential people throughout the town, the project evolved into something much greater than what it is now. So after coming up and presenting in front of the Board of Selectmen, we had land donated to us, which kind of really kicked off the whole project after this, and we kind of knew that we would have a place to build a skate park. We ran over 60 fundraisers. We've done a ton of different interviews and newspapers. Some notable ones were even NPR. I was kind of thinking back about that the other day. I always grew up going to lacrosse practices, listened to the NPR in the car with my dad, and I just thought it was really cool that this project brought us to a spot where I could be on NPR. Yeah, I thought that was interesting. So in the past seven years, we've just worked hard. We've raised money. We've done these interviews, and we've just learned a lot over the way that has kind of helped us develop into a project or a nonprofit where we've raised around $330,000 in cash and a very decent amount more in in-kind or just like donations and materials and So really, what brought us here is the guidance from parents in our towns, and without that, we would have never developed and grown into such an immense and interesting project. Could you go to the next? Oh, yeah. Demographics and target audience. So part of my reason for being up here is I just kind of wanted to remind the members of the board who have -- might have seen our project before, and then also kind of show the new members who we are. So in our original slideshow, we included a demographic and target audience of Lunenburg. So since then, the population of Lunenburg has risen by about 1,000 people, and about 50% of the population in Lunenburg are over the age of, well, are of legal age over 18 to 50, I believe it says. So could you go to the next slide, please? So I think that's interesting.
Are you suggesting in here that people over 44 aren't skating?
No, 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 no. Actually, I was going to say exactly the opposite. We put out a survey in the very beginning of our project to our -- to the high school and our town. We got about 400 responses, 90% of which were very positive, and I thought what was interesting is 70% of those respondents were over 18. So I was going to relate that back to the increase in more -- there's more people in town. There's more need for a space in which people can bike, scooter, rollerblade. Maybe you could even hop on a skateboard.
Not a chance. Not a chance.
Skateboarding and other wheeled sports are becoming increasingly popular, as the skateboarding is going to be even in the 2024 Olympics now. So I think this increase or growth in population represents an increased need for a space like a skate park. Can you go to the next slide?
I think if I got on a skateboard, I would definitely break my back.
Break something.
I feel like I'd break it when I wake up in the mornings.
I don't know. I'm coming back from ACL surgery. I was skating today.
Hey, that's pretty good.
I feel like if I can do it, you can get on there.
Twice your age and some.
So have we raised over $300,000. Like I said, we've done 60-plus fundraisers. This wasn't the only way we raised money. We've reached out to a ton of different organizations and businesses. One prominent one was the Tony Hawk Foundation. I'm sure everyone knows who Tony Hawk is, but, yeah, so we've just -- we've been reaching out to grants, foundations, and running fundraisers, and over time, this has just allowed us to raise money and increase the amount of goods we've been able to accrue towards this project. Can you go to the next slide, please? So in raising this money, we hope to build a skate park similar to this design. In my -- well, all of our senior year, which was last year, we met with -- or we decided on a designer, frontier skate parks. And more than, I think around five or six, over five or six Zoom calls, we kind of came up with a design, and I'd like to just explain that real quick. So this is a plaza-style skate park. It caters to experienced and beginner riders, young and old. There's different sections of the park. You can see in the -- at the very top of the park, in the middle, there's a flat section with just a couple rails and a box. And then on the bottom and right side of the skate park, it's mostly bowl, which is allows for just a smoother, kind of more flowy kind of skateboarding. So this park will be about 8,500 square feet, which caters to around -- for a population over 10,000 people, and about 30 riders will be able to safely use this at once. Can you go to the next slide, please? So our current status, right now, we're just kind of wrapping up the legal aspects of building the park. We're getting -- we're just about done with the right-of-entry and skate park builder contract. We're just kind of finalizing the details, making sure the contract is good for both parties, the town and the skate park. And can you go to the next slide, please? And so on our timeline, now is the site engineering portion, and in the near future, we are going to start clearing out the trees in the direct zone of the skate park, and in summer of 2024, we are going to break ground and complete this project. So, yeah. And then we'll ask if you have anybody in town, really, even though everyone's been so generous and welcoming towards this project, every dollar counts. We've been saying this the entire time fundraising. Even just a conversation means the world to us. So if anybody would like to reach out, send a dollar our way, just -- or even just talk to us over Instagram, ask questions about the park, that would be incredible. Our Instagram is @lunbergsskatepark, and I believe our Facebook is the same, @lunbergsskatepark. So if anyone just wants to reach out or send a dollar, that would be incredible. Yeah, that's all I have for you today. Is there any questions? Is there any questions you guys were thinking of?
We'll start with Mr. Franco, who's on Zoom.
Oh, sure.
I have been following this project in my three years on the board. And thank you for the update. I've really been impressed how you, your team has stuck with this and really seen it through to this point. And so I, you know, I'm a supporter of this in general. I will also mention that my, you said that the boarding is gonna be an Olympic event now. And my, I have a cousin who has medaled in an Olympic qualifier event. And she's 17 years old. And hopefully, she'll be in the Olympics very soon. So I'm sort of following it because of that now. So that's all I have for, thanks for your update.
Thank you, Lou.
Yeah, thank you for your support. And I wish your, I think you said niece the best. That's incredible. Or cousin, sorry.
Yeah, you could look her up. Her name is Mina Stess. M-I-N-N-A. Stess, S-T-E-S-S. Just Google that name and she's all over the sport.
I'll look into that. Thank you.
Yep.
I want to thank you for the update. Great presentation. I think you should be incredibly proud, you and all of your friends, for seeing this through and you're so close to the ultimate goal, the finish line. I'm looking forward to the opening ceremony, if you will, this summer. Honestly, I tried skateboarding once many, even a couple decades ago, more. I will not be getting on a skateboard again. But that is not to take away from all of this. Again, I think you guys should be really proud of what you've accomplished already.
Thank you. I and all the members appreciate your kind words in allowing myself to present to you guys tonight.
Well, Aiden, thank you for being here tonight. It's always a pleasure watching you guys grow up. And now you've gone off to college and you've come home with painted nails. And I'm sure your parents are like, what is going on here? No, but really, it's good to see you. It's good to see you growing up. You know, I was hoping, well, not hoping, but it's always, it's always good to see the crew. You know, I think we've gotten into this pattern of getting the updates. And I think I ran into like the other Aiden and someone else at Honey Farms or before they went off to college. So it's good to see you. You did a great job tonight. I think I have one good takeaway, which is the word flowy. That's gonna be a new one for me. But no, I think y'all, obviously, over the years, you've done a great job of pulling this together. It's a lot of work. You know, I'm sure you know that your parents and everyone, I'm sure, in your family is so excited. I'm sure when you started this project in seventh grade, that you thought, hey, maybe this has become a reality before I graduate high school. And after seeing the slow wheels of government work, it's good to see that you're still on it, that you guys are still helping this move forward. You know, and don't have any shame and plug in that you need 67,000 more dollars. I mean, you guys have done a phenomenal job, obviously, raising 293 grand, 60 fundraisers over all these years. You know, there's a lot to be proud of. I know we got a, I got a call maybe about a year ago and it was from a resident who lives on Chestnut. And the resident said, look, I really don't support this skate park. And I just have all these concerns with it. And I want to know what your thoughts are on this Marshall Park plan. And I said, well, I don't know a lot about what's going on in Marshall Park, but the one thing I do support is the skate park. You know, so I think this is one of those things that over the years, you guys have done a really, again, great job communicating on designing it. I was out in Greenfield, because I'm out there often, and there's one that's actually a similar design. And I'm gonna tell you, I have a vacant property out there, you know, that I manage. It's a humongous piece of property. And we never have any concerns with the kids from the skate park. Every day after school and even during the day, it's the older crowd. And then after school gets out, you know, you have the kids typically come in. And never have any concerns. And it really is a good, it seems to be a great opportunity for young people to engage with one another. It's social, it gets you out of the house, you're not in front of a screen. You know, there's so many positives to this. So I want to thank you and thank your team for all the work you guys have done. And you, you know, it's really inspirational. I mean, I, you know, I think last time I probably swore something, which I don't normally do. So it won't happen today. I'm being a little more careful. But I think this is, it's so, it really is. I feel inspired by the work that you guys have done over these years. So thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate that, I appreciate that so much. I think this has kind of been our dream for the last seven years. So hearing you guys, your guys praise means a lot to me.
Yeah, keep it up.
Thank you very much.
Make sure you don't waste your parents' money in school and keep the grades up too.
Skate park's actually funding my college, I would say, perhaps. It's a great, great resume piece.
Thank you, thank you. All right. Good to see you, Anthony, as well. I know you've had a lot of work on this as well as everyone else, so. All right. So we're gonna go now to our 7:30 meeting. This is a joint meeting that's gonna go for a little bit of time here. And this is with the, the goal, I know with Mr. Franco being on vacation, we want to be, you know, respectful of that. But I know that we have a lot to cover tonight. We have a lot of questions that we're probably gonna be asked about process, how we got here. So Brian, I'm gonna fully turn it over to you. You can let me know if you want us to interrupt with questions along the way, if you want us to jot them down, wait till the end.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just wanted to make a couple remarks before introducing our guest. When the Board of Assessors was reconstituted back in September, one of our main goals, and my main goal, was to reestablish trust with the taxpayers of Lunenburg. Beginning of September, we started a project to do the five-year revale that is required by the state. We've been working with Vision Government Solutions. Mike Terrello, who may or may not know him, has gone through every property in the community, a field review of every parcel. We put together a data collection manual. The focus of that was to make sure that we had the right factors in there for every piece of property in the community. And then we had to focus on FY '22 sales to establish value of lands and buildings. We were required, just recently, we're moving along, just recently, we were required to do some public disclosure for that public disclosure. We were required to put up FY '24 public disclosure of tax valuation notice and an assessed value by location, which is a fairly thick book of all kinds of information about virtually every property in town. In actuality, we also, in a way of trying to maintain some trust or recover some trust, we want to be very transparent. So we actually posted the public disclosure notice, the assessed value by location, in a PDF. We posted the FY, excuse me, the calendar year '22 sales. We posted the FY '24 residential assessed value in an Excel format for people to play with. The calendar year '21, '22, and '23 sales report, also in an Excel format, so people could access it. And we posted the 2023 abatement master file because we had an unusual amount of abatements, as you may recall, in 2023. The results of the public disclosure process that we just finished, only eight parcels were changed. The factors on eight parcels were changed. Several five were erroneously categorized as a cottage bungalow. In fact, were camps. We had one condo erroneously had some land on it. We removed yard items, and I think those are probably shed or outbuildings that were no longer there. And we reinstated an influence factor on one piece of property. So of the eight, there were really not very many. One was large, the land piece. The overall reduction in property values from those activities was $611,000. So against a much larger number than that was negligible change. In an effort for continued transparency, we are establishing a much more vibrant website. We've created a, I'll get, well, it's gonna be on the website, but also a handout that could be used, it's called How to Read Your Vision Property Card. So you don't have to go in there and flounder. You can go find something and know what to look for. We're gonna keep the abatement master file out of the website. We're gonna keep the 2021, excuse me, 2021, 2022, and 2023 sales reports out there. We are posting the residential commercial review for all properties, all residential properties and commercial properties, including the 2023 abatements and the eight properties that were changed. We are also putting together, we haven't yet, but we haven't finalized it yet, but the condo review will also be provided out at the website. So we're trying to make sure we are as transparent as possible. Tonight, we are wrapping up, nearly wrapping up, the five-year revale process. We have as a guest Nate Kramer of the Municipal Financial Services. He's gonna present the slides for the classification hearing. Nate has a vast experience in the world of assessment, over 20 years' experience. He's a graduate of Emmanuel College, Suffolk University for his masters, and MIT for some certifications. So at that, at this point, I'd really like to turn it over to Nate to talk about the numbers.
I hate hearing about myself. And I don't feel like a guest anymore. Okay, so tonight, the purpose of this presentation is to select a single or split tax rate, whether to adopt an open space discount, whether to adopt a residential exemption, and whether to adopt a small commercial exemption. First, this first slide I wanted to show you, just shows, I always include this in these presentations because the fiscal '24 values are based on sales that happened in calendar 2022. But since we're in '24 now, we can actually see what happened in 2023. So this data is actually from MLS. This is not from the assessor's office. This is what prices have actually done in the market in 2023. So you can see they've continued to rise. And that will affect the fiscal '25 evaluations. Next slide. This just shows, it's a comparison of last year versus this year. The residential class overall is increasing about 5%. The commercial, industrial, and personal property is showing a 20% increase, but I believe that most of that falls into the personal property, probably utility, the utility class, because the commercial and industrial classes on their own are only going up, I think, 6% to 8%, which you'll see in a further slide. So the total value has gone up from 2.1 billion to just over 2.2 billion from last year to this year. So this is what the values have done. And I singled out the waterfront just because of what happened last year. The values did increase again between 10% and 14% depending on the type of waterfront as we established last year. And that's based on sales. And then the non-waterfront homes are gonna see about a 6% increase. Condos, in speaking with Mike Terrello, who actually did the values, said it looked like they just hadn't been, probably because of sales, they just hadn't been adjusted for quite some time. So they're seeing a significant increase, as well as multifamily, upwards of 30%, which is, which is quite much. Commercial, industrial, 6% to 8%, and personal property, about 17%. So that's what was affecting that overall commercial, industrial, and personal property increase.
Nate, if I might interrupt, just not to throw you off. That value on the waterfront neighborhoods raising from 10% to 14% is after the abatements. If we went back to the 2023 values as they were assessed, the waterfront actually are dropping 11% to 31%, depending on which neighborhood you're in. So just a clarification.
Good.
So, I mean, I think this is an important screen. And if we go backwards, just one slide to the town manager. So I just wanna, I know that sometimes when we display things at home, it doesn't always come across clearly. So I'll just restate it. I know you already said it, but I'll say it again. That what you're saying for value changes overall by use, that single-family waterfront, it's gonna be a 10% to 14% increase. That single-family non-waterfront, a 6% on, and these are all averages, 6% increase. That condos, people who own or live in a condo, a 30% increase. Multifamilies, up to a 30% increase. Commercial, industrial property will see a 6% to 8% increase. And personal property, a 17% increase.
Yeah, and a last question of that would be utility properties, so I will for his guests.
Okay.
Thank you.
And just to reiterate what Brian said, this 10% to 14% increase on the waterfront properties, it's still lower than what the initial values were for fiscal '23. You said up to a 30% decrease from what they initially were. So what is causing the market to increase? So again, these values are based on calendar year 2022 and what happened. In 2022, we still had record-low mortgage interest rates. As the year went on, they did double up to around 7%. So that was, you know, people could afford more. And despite the high interest rates, there's still high demand. Inventory is still really low. Now it's really low because nobody wants to move and give up their great mortgage rates because they're going to be paying double. And then just referring back to slide four. The prices continue to rise in 2023. So it's Lunenburg, the Lunenburg market, I think, it, I haven't seen that in other communities that I work in where it's going up that steep still. But that's, it's a desirable town. This is a comparison of single-family tax rate, average value, and average bill from fiscal '23 to '24. The rate is actually, through the approval of the DOR, the final certification, is actually dropping from 1462 to 1410. And the average single-family bill is actually dropping also by about $100. And here's that same slide for the commercial, industrial, and personal property. Their average bills are going up quite a bit, largely due to, this number's a little tweaked because of that personal property increase. So most people won't realize this much of an increase on the personal property bill. This slide is just the fiscal '23 levy limit working up to what the fiscal '24 maximum allowable levy is. This year, there was $630,220 in growth, which I think is significantly, significantly higher than what it normally is. That can be probably attributed to the project that we did on the waterfront, picking up, you know, decks that weren't there, air conditioners that weren't there. And also when Vision was here doing their work, they, they found quite a bit also.
Houses.
I wasn't gonna bring that up. Several houses that were in the database. So the fiscal '24 maximum allowable levy is $31,852,740. And this next slide is just a comparison of neighboring communities, just to show where Lunenburg is. Interestingly, I would have thought that Leinster and Pittsburgh would have split tax rates, but they don't, so that is actually a great comparison. Lunenburg's pretty much in the middle. I would say Shirley's probably the closest. Broughton is significantly higher. And everyone else is, you know, their average values are lower. But in saying that, Lunenburg does have one of the lower tax rates also. Now getting to the four items that the board needs to act on. I don't, I think they've historically just voted no on all of these things. One is the residential exemption, which just wouldn't make sense here because it's a 97% residential, 93% residential and owner-occupied. Tax shift, again, there's still a little commercial. Historically, the town hasn't voted to do a tax shift. That's where it would increase the commercial rate and lower the residential rate, placing some of the burden on the commercial people. But I think that would be so significant that it would just thwart any future growth for commercial in the town, probably. And then there's a small commercial exemption, which, and you guys feel free to give feedback if you're interested, but I haven't heard any. if you're interested, but I haven't heard any word on whether or not you want to adopt these things, so I just kind of said the town doesn't want it. The town doesn't want it. And it makes sense in a small town like this. And that concludes it. The last slide is just action that the select board needs to take, but we're not willing to take any questions if people have them.
Yeah, so, I mean, we, because we have a member remote, I will keep referring over to Selectman Franco first, since he's remote, so, Mr. Franco?
Yes, one thing I just want to make sure is on the record and absolutely clear so that there are no surprises like there were last year. So going back to slide five, these represent, of course, averages. So say, for example, single-family waterfront, the increase is an average of 10% to 14%. But say within, more, more grand, are there subsets of any properties in any of these types, you know, that you've identified here that exhibit anomalous spikes? Like, is there some segment or some, some small set that's going to see some wildly increase somewhere that's wildly out of the realms of what you presented here on slide five to get to these averages? I mean, you know, some might only go up 5%, but is there anybody that's going up 30% in a single-family waterfront there?
I, I think if something like that were to happen, it would be as a result of things that we found in our inspections. So maybe they had an addition that wasn't picked up, or, you know, maybe they did a significant renovation that was, that wasn't reflected on the record card. So if there was a major increase, you know, something significantly higher than, than these averages, then that's probably why.
Okay, thank you. One other point that I just want to clarify, you did touch on it, and this has been brought up several times in the past, but I know that it's, has a life of its own now on social media, so I just want to address it, and you can either correct or endorse what I'm about to say here. The reason we do not do two different tax rates, and I served on the order assessors in the past, the rationale of thinking was that until commercial and industrial starts approaching something like 20% of the tax base, it doesn't really pay to do two different rates because the benefits to the residential tax side are going to be outweighed by the potential for chasing commercial out of the town and increasing the residential rate even more because you've lost commercial now. Is that fair?
Somewhat, except for the 80/20, you don't always see that because, you know, Lunenburg's such a small town, you know, 20% could be billions of value in a, in a city. So you don't always see, sorry, I'm looking behind, I'm speaking to the person I see.
It's over there now.
But yeah, I would think in a small town that, you know, I have it broken out here, is it 97% residential?
Yeah.
It just doesn't make sense typically, and to go to a split rate, it couldn't work, you know, any people, commercial, you know, they're looking to expand here. It doesn't, the town doesn't have the greatest highway access, you know, what, what will bring here for people here is that lower tax rate.
Yeah, okay, but, but, fine, maybe those percentages aren't exactly correct, but the idea being is that we are nowhere near a percentage of commercial and industrial, as, as a percentage of the tax base that it would make sense to even start thinking about splitting the rate because of what I basically just said. You're not seeing enough benefit on the residential side to take the risk of chasing more limited commercial and industrial you do have out of town.
I would say so. I mean, Leominster and Pittsburgh don't need to do it, and they have direct highway access, and they're much, much larger commercial bases.
All right, thank you.
And Mr. Franco, I just want to add on to that. I know you're asking questions just to get the answers kind of out in the public domain, and I will call the town manager on this one too, but one of the things that we've previously done is looked at who has a dual tax rate in this area. And what we identified was that basically from Air to Garner, all of us north of Route 2 stay on a single rate, and when you look at the tax rate by town, it's, we're all pretty comparable. We're all within the same dollar and a half or so. But really, it's if one of us decides to do split, which is usually doubling on the commercial rate, that if one of us does it, we can basically guarantee that we will be the non-business-friendly community in the area, and that we will lose that revenue because they can just go next door where it will be half the taxes. And one of the things that we found in commonalities was the communities that have, in addition to having a high percentage of commercial industrial property, it's also where they're at, that it's about like junctions, like Air has a two-system, but they are like critical junctions go through Air. And then I think Garner similarly in the same row, but they're mostly, they're, they're junctions, but they're also, they need the money, and they have the commercial or industrial base there. So we did look into this previously, and I know the board has historically stuck with the single rate, but those were factors I know previously that contributed to that analysis. I don't know if the town manager wanted to offer anything else there.
Just if the board or Mr. Kramer can add to the tax rate, as far as, I think there's misnomers about there of having a low tax rate, how that calculation is done, you know, as far as a factor of assessed values, because...
Having a low tax rate?
Right, so...
Like, how does a tax rate drop? I think that's, is that what you're asking?
Not only how it drops, but it doesn't mean you're essentially going to have low taxes. It's a function of, you know, your assessed values.
Yeah, you're still raising the same amount of money, but the, but the values were increased significantly enough that it...
Correct, that's what I went on.
Yeah, I believe last year they dropped about $3, but that cost the town a lot of money. So I was, I was actually, I was happy to see them continue to drop. But yeah, you're still raising the same amount of money, but the value's increased, so the rate has decreased. But in this case, because of this significant increase on the multifamily condos and personal property, the average single-family tax bill for fiscal '24, I believe is lower, is going down about, is it $100? It was somewhere around there.
Actually, I want to add to that because I think a function of that has to do with our pro forma recap in that we were capped at that new growth amount following that, so the additional new growth, even though it's added to our base for fiscal '25, isn't factored into the fiscal '24 tax rate. So that's what's also driving it down as well.
And fiscal '25 should have good...
Right.
Good growth also.
One other thing I wanted to point out, because I did look at all the, the valuations, is the commercial property that significantly increased on Leominster Shirley Road. So that was another factor of the commercial...
Yeah.
...properties. Because it wasn't full of...
One property.
Right, one property in particular.
Eight percent?
Was it $400,000, I think?
Oh, the amount of tax, I don't recall.
Because it was near completion. The industrial, the distribution warehouse.
Got it. They just finished their, that double in size. All right, we'll turn to Select...
We may be able to answer the question, I think. Nate, could you share what you had?
Yeah.
Do you want to share what you had? So it was, it was, she was clarifying what Michael Ray stated, just that it was, or, was it?
Go ahead.
I don't know, but it went, it went from being just vacant land to being complete is what, why that building value increased so much.
It went to a commercial warehouse-type building, and it went from like $230,000 to $17 million in valuation. And, and at the $17 million, because it's not...
Rhea, if you wouldn't mind us getting close to that microphone, because we can hear you in the room, but I know folks at home can't.
And because the building is only at 70% complete, it does not have a tenant fit up in there yet, it's, there's still a possibility of more growth if they get some tenants in there, and then they do, they finish off the interior of the building. But it went from just vacant land to a commercial building at $17 million. So that's where the greatest amount of growth came in.
$17 million, 70% complete, so about $13 million worth of value, and the taxes, whatever the taxes were off the top of my head, I don't have.
And we're talking, just, just to recap, I think we may have missed it, we're talking about on Leominster Shirley Road, the new distribution center...
Yes.
...that went off, went up on what used to be part of PJ Keating's property.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. I was wondering if you could explain, I am not familiar, haven't heard of the small commercial exemption before.
Sure. So, I had a feeling someone would ask, so I actually just copy in case there's... Adopting the small commercial, not many communities do it. Adopting the small commercial exemption allows the town to exempt up to 10% of the property valuation for owner-occupied businesses with 10 or less employees and a valuation of less than $1 million.
So do we have those situations in Lunenburg? Do we have a...
I don't know.
Don't think it's ever been quantified? That I'm aware of that the assessors have looked at or...
I don't think we specifically identified any, but that doesn't mean there aren't any. We just haven't specifically identified them at this time. It would be a limited sample size, though. There wouldn't be very many.
The other question I had was if you could explain...
Oh, that's one of the things. Mr. Abbott just reminded, we haven't really signed any, so we don't, I don't know if we have anybody that qualifies today at all.
Okay.
You would have to adopt it for someone to sign up for it. It's something that they would reapply for every year. There's tracking metrics involved to make sure that they can, they're conforming, being able to receive the exemption.
If I might, though, for next year, we certainly could do a study on that and find out if there would be, how much, how much we would be able to take advantage of that and what it might be worth.
I've never heard of it before. I've heard the, you know, the split rate in commercial, but not the small commercial exemption.
Right, sorry. Good question.
No. And then I was wondering, could you explain a little more about the condos, because I believe they were treated as separate communities because there's very different condo complexes in town?
Yes, so each condo complex is, is treated, it's treated as its own valuation neighborhood just because every condo complex is built at a different time, could be a different style, different quality. So each condo complex is looked at individually, and I believe in the past few years, there just weren't many condo sales or maybe prior to myself or Vision being here, but they just weren't looked at, I'm not sure. But based on the sales data, the sales that happened in 2022, they saw that they needed a significant increase. But yeah, they, each one is looked at as a different neighborhood, and then they're looked at as, so if you have, they're stratified by style, size, age, so if there, if there are three complexes built around the same unit, the same style, they would look at them together. They're, they're looked at several different ways to make sure that it's equitable.
Okay, I just, I want to get that out there because it's listed as a single-item condos, and it's, they are, there are sub-breakdowns, if you will, under that class of condos.
Right.
Yeah. I just want to make the public aware of that.
Right.
That's all.
Okay. I have a couple. So during this process, I know that I've learned over the last year that part of what the Board of Assessors does is you're looking at sales, you're, everything is really based on sales, and, but I do want to ask the question. So has the board taken a look at a spreadsheet that details fiscal '23 values and compare them to fiscal '24 values to look for outliers? I know this is replicating a question we asked previously, but has anyone compared what this will do in terms of looking at, I know we're looking at it from big picture, but as far as going home by home, has anyone looked at this?
So I mentioned the evaluation of the 2024 values. It includes 2023 values as well as the rate of change from 2023 to 2024. So we have that information. We did identify that there are some that are going to change significantly more than others. What we presented were averages. By the way, those, those are not mean averages, they are median averages. There are like three different types of average, right?
Would you mind, I mean, I, you know, I was, I know math, but would you mind explaining to those at home what the difference is? I think my next question is like, how does the average rate go down by $100? So if you can explain what these different terms mean to those at home as best you can.
We all know what a mean average is because that's what we all think of as average. Add them all up, divide by the number you have, and you're done. When you're looking at the median, you're looking at, you take them and you rank them all, and you find the midpoint. So the, what you're doing in that situation is you are sort of eliminating the impact of those outliers on the bottom and the top. So you are trying to, here's, here's what the, the normal mid-range of that, of that sample size is. Mean, median, and mode, well, mode...
Nobody uses mode.
Nobody uses, nobody uses mode, it's just the most frequent number. So we don't know what the most frequent number is because they're all going to be a little different if you do, if your percentage is out to more than six or eight decimal points. And we could do that, but it's not really useful.
So, so to, I'm just going to say this back to you then.
It's okay.
So when, when we look at this, and I know that as I learned last year, a lot of things are mean and medians. So when you say that the, you know, median, is it median household is going to go down by $100, right? But the average is going up by like 200 and something. Is that fair to say?
Yes, yes. So, so when we're developing these values and when we're getting certified by Department of Revenue, everything is done by medians. We use averages just because it's, 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 it's different than the number, it's probably close to the number, but it's easier to understand.
Okay. So although we're saying that taxes rates are going down, that the median bill is going down, that by $100 roughly, that most people on, on average are going to, and I want to make sure I'm using the words correctly, let me get back to this slide.
The mean, mean bill is going down.
So the median bill is going down, mean?
What he just said is the, the mean...
Got it.
Is going down.
So you're saying the average bill's going down, not the median?
The mean average is going down.
Got it. That's what, that's what I was trying to...
The median, I don't know what the median's doing, and look at that.
Yeah.
Because I didn't care.
All right, so, got it.
So glad I'm taking a class this week that's doing all.
Well, I mean, you know, a lot of, it's, I think it's helpful for, for when we start talking mean and median to explain what that means. All right, I don't really have any other questions. I will state a couple of opinions, though. I'm not going to, I don't support the exemptions. So, I mean, I think that, that we haven't historically done it, we haven't historically, and I, I don't, I don't agree with it. You know, I, I think that we need our commercial base, I don't know if we should be exempting them from any taxes. We certainly need our residential base. We can't afford to exempt the residential base from any taxes. And then the discount granted to open space, a lot of people have their open space property in chapters and different things anyway. There's a lot of different options available for owners, you know, and so I wouldn't support some kind of reduction due to that. And then broadly speaking, I don't want to put us in a position in which we will find that commercial businesses are fleeing our community. You know, we really, even though it's not a big percentage of our income, we do rely upon that income. You know, 3% is no small amount when you're dealing with $28 million, or now I think $31 million. So I am going to support a single tax rate, and, and I'm not going to support the exemptions. And I'll just pull the board so we can just make one motion here on this. Anyone think differently? That's probably a better question. Mr. Franco, do you have a different thought process?
I do not, I can't remember where you are. Exactly.
All right, so what is, to the town manager, what is a motion that we are, we need to make tonight?
I think it's on Mr. Kramer's last slide.
Slide 13.
The action slide?
You want to say no to all of them?
Yeah, but I, do we need to say no to all of them? Or do we just need to say yes to the ones we're saying yes to?
You're not saying yes to any of them.
It's always better to take a vote.
I'll go ahead and make a motion. I move for the select board to adopt a single tax rate for the town of Lunenburg and to take no action on a discount for open space, a discount for residential exemptions, or a discount for commercial exemptions.
Second.
All right, any additional discussion? All right, so we roll, oh.
For the record, we could also state in that mode, edge of that motion, what that rate is, I think.
Yes.
Thank you. I will clarify, I think it was 1410, right?
Yes.
1410.
I will clarify, I will amend my motion to add in the language $14.10 as the single tax rate.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion?
No.
Okay. So we roll call vote. Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Zimki?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. Okay. All right. Next to our agenda, don't go anywhere.
I believe we may let Mr. Kramer go.
Oh, not, not you.
Hang on a second.
No, no, no. I was talking to the board. Mr. Kramer, thank you. First of all, for those at home who don't know, you know, Mr. Kramer was instrumental last year in assisting us in the process that we underwent to get through the abatements. His team was able to come out, take a look at everyone's homes, and how we arrived at the better result was through the work of Mr. Kramer and his team. I think through that, certainly, we had a lot of confidence in the work that you do. It's great to, to know that you've remained on board essentially with us, helping out Rena, helping out the Board of Assessors, kind of get through this year, working with Vision. So I just first want to thank you, Nate, for the work you've done for our community. And, and I, you know, I know people say this, but it's really true in this case, we couldn't have done it without you.
Thank you. We've really enjoyed working there too. It's been, it's been great.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? If you could, I, you stole half my thunder, Michael. I just wanted to come out and say, Nate, we, just to give a sense of numbers, when we did the first pass and you, you folks came in, we ended up writing 440 abatements as a result of your great work. Your, your team came through beautifully. I also want to say thank you very much to the Vision people who pulled a lot of this together. In fact, as part of their review process, they made more than 200 changes to the property cards, and additionally, we found a few pieces of property we forgot. I mean, there's all sorts of things, positive things that came out of the work between what you did and the Vision people. And Heather, I would like to thank you for finding those folks. Good job. And I just think, how can you not be excited about $14.10 tax rate? I mean, this is, this is really good work. And so I just want to say thank you very much. And by the way, folks, keep looking at your Vision cards. Read Sarah's Vision, how to read your Vision card, because it's, it makes a difference.
That's great that you guys did that. I didn't know you did that.
Thank you.
I just also want to say thank you to Nate and his team as well for his work tonight, for putting the tax classification hearing together, working through with the board and the town, including Rena, as far as all the pieces that go together, and all the work of the board as well. There's a lot, a lot of hours spent, I know, by board members, so it's very appreciated. And Rena as well. So we couldn't have done it without all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let us know if you need us.
So we're gonna, I know next to our agenda, the Board of Assessors is staying right put because you guys have a, another request from us relating to a proposal that should be pretty straightforward on the request itself tonight. I don't know if, you don't need to oversell this in other words.
First, we want to do something, Mr. Chairman, we need to, so, yeah. We agreed at our last meeting to propose this, we need to sign this, the article sheet. So, and then it will go potentially, go before town council and get cleaned up and easily cleaned up if the board says, does support putting on the warrant. So the first thing we do is sign, and I think because we already voted to support it, we just sign it. So if you don't mind, I promise to get the right line, sign on the right line. I signed it in your name last time. Yes. It's okay.
Just mind your, if you're going to speak, press the button.
No.
Nope.
I was agreeing.
Yours is on the.
This is ready. He was talking at this.
So to those at home while, while the board is signing, so this portion is a presentation from the Board of Ass, from the Board of Assessors on a proposed annual town meeting warrant article for changing, you know, we noted it master general law, but we're not, I'm assuming we're not changing master general law here tonight. And, and really, it's about providing for a low income senior tax exemption from 70 to 65 years, so reducing that age by five years.
So before we, I introduce Mr. Rabbit to present this, I just want to say a few things. I had an epiphany this weekend, it should have been sooner. The Board of Assessors' primary role is to assess the fair value of all real and personal property in town. Our secondary role is to administer the exemptions that the voters of Lunenburg have deemed to be fair and reasonable. Since becoming a member of the Board of Assessors, I've stated my primary goal, my primary goal is to reestablish the trust with the Lunenburg taxpayers. The only way to do that is to ensure we are looking out for the interests of every taxpayer. We are not charged with advocating for any particular group. Back in January, we were assigning some of the qualified exemptions, including the 41(c) exemptions, which are designed to help out some poor elderly property owners. One of our members noticed that there might be an opportunity to expand that help. We began to investigate and found that there were some modifications that could do just that. Here's where I went astray. As a chair, I allowed the board to investigate and evaluate proposing an article warrant to, article, a warrant article to make some modifications to our 41(c) implementation. While this may be a worthy goal, it is not the Board of Assessors' role. Rather, I should have instructed our member to bring the issue to the Council on Aging. I would like to personally apologize to the Council on Aging for not allowing them to do their jobs. We decided which options to pursue and when, not our role. I want to apologize to the Board of Assessors. Our discussions have been somewhat heated at times on this issue and should not even have been on our agenda. I want to apologize to the Select Board. We should not be the proponents of this article. I want to apologize to the taxpayers. We should not be an activist board, but one that fairly determines your real and personal property values. The minute we advocate for someone, we essentially advocate against someone else. Lastly, I want to apologize to my wife. I could have been home so much earlier if I'd been a better chairman. Thank you. I'd like to introduce Mr. Rabbit, please.
And Mr. Chairman, Michael, I would like to provide a rebuttal with regard to our chairman's comments.
No, no, no. I would just encourage the presentation.
Okay.
But I do appreciate the offer, but I, I would encourage your presentation.
We, we also needed to discuss the funding before we get too far. Okay.
Before it's proposed.
No, no, that's absolutely true. Thank you for, point of order.
If, if I may, I happen to notice members of the Council of Aging sitting right behind you. If I may ask, is the, is, I know that you haven't polled your members, are you, is the board generally comfortable with the presentation that we're about to receive, or would you prefer for this presentation to come to you first?
It did.
It did.
Today.
Okay.
And they were very comfortable with it.
The response was that it did come to them today, and they were very comfortable with it. Mr. Rabbit?
Well, before we do that, we, we needed to discuss the funding source for where this money's going to come from. The, the recommendation that you'll hear in just a minute has an implication of cost of about $2,500 to the town.
It's options in here.
Options.
There were options, but the one that we are recommending.
$5,000 is what we say for current costs, option.
The cost for, the cost for this option is probably about $2,500 or spread across the entire community, 57 cents per residence. Having said that, I would, I would like to propose that we try to absorb that within the current overlay rather than trying to make a mess of the overlay, number one. And if I had a conversation with the town manager today, we may not be able to affect the overlay anyway. Is that fair?
It's a fair statement when the tax rate recap is finalized based on valuations and decimal points and rounding factors. If to make those adjustments, the system automatically does a recalculation for those rounding factors and it hits the overlay. So with a reduction in the tax rate, there's a positive influential factor to the overlay with a increase, it's a reduction to the, to the balance in the overlay count.
So the, the financial impact there was that we had proposed a number of $120,000. I believe that the number that we've gotten back from the state is 127,000 and some change.
Correct.
So I, go ahead.
If I may make the suggestion, I think we're getting a little too weedy into inside baseball without a presentation that explains what we're even talking about.
We need to take the vote first.
Okay.
That's the only reason we're doing this. I'm sorry.
Can you tell me about the 127,000 you're talking about?
But that's for fiscal '24. What you voted.
We voted.
A few weeks ago was for fiscal '25 budget.
Right, 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 right.
Okay.
So, my motion was to try to absorb this recommended change within the current overlay number that we've agreed to. If somebody wants to discuss that or they want to second it, we could do that.
I would like to discuss that. We had a conversation about not increasing our, our overlay. And when I voted for this, I, we did not talk about funding. I erroneously made an assumption that that was understood and that it was going to go before the voters to decide how to fund it, if we were going to enact it this year, or if we were going to enact it in a future year for that overlay, or if people were wanting to put it on an override. And I should have pushed that conversation, but I had a lot of other things in that meeting that were on my mind, and I did not, I did not bring up that previous conversation. So that's also my fault. However, I think if we are going to absorb it within the current overlay that is, is present, I see no reason not to put it forward because in fact, when we discussed this in that previous meeting, we had said that if and when, and it hasn't been voted on by the public yet, if and when they voted for it, if we needed more money for the overlay or if we needed more money to fund it, we would then go to the Finance Committee to talk about it. And that was why I supported it, because I, I do think, as you stated, that it should come from the voters and then it should be voted on by all of the voters before money is included to it. So if we can absorb it within the overlay, I think this would be great because then if we can go forward, it won't impact the budget and it will allow people to vote on it. So I second your motion.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I thought you had asked two questions if I could. I voted with the 120, but I'm not sure, and perhaps town management shows, how much do we actually have allocated into the overlay? I heard a number of 400 or something like that.
I would have to pull that up. I don't have that off, it's to have my head.
The existing savings account called the overlay.
The overlay account total, I would have to.
I have a recollection of beating around 560,000.
562,000, right. 562,000.
And to the chairman's point, we're, we're in Robinoff's nuts here in terms of the 5,000. And I would think that.
No, no, my point was just I didn't, I don't know if most people at home were able to follow what you guys were talking about. There hasn't been any presentation on the subject.
So, went along with it, so, excuse me, Mr. Chairman. If you can, I'm speaking up. Sorry. I thought you were done. Okay. We, we essentially, when we did the analysis of it, we came up with a number which was similar to what the number MFS had come up with, roughly $200,000. However, when we realized that there was that much money sitting there and the number looked, okay, 120 could work too, I voted for the 120. That note came out from Nate that morning. So, the motion on the table is to fund this out of the 120, and are you saying, what are you saying? We can't? Go ahead.
If we need to, we dip into the other side of the, the 500,000 or whatever that number is.
Oh.
That's what happens automatically, yeah. That's what happens. I'm not worried about it.
I, I, I really want to be respectful, but if I may make a suggestion, that, you know, I think part of the joint meeting here are things that you need us for. And so if I may ask, that if we can, if you wouldn't mind moving forward with the presentation for the ask that you have for us, that whatever business the board needs to do, separate from their need for us to be here, to do that without us being here.
So.
You have a motion in a second, though. I'm, I'm waiting for you to vote on it.
Me too.
Then I would, then I would ask to go into the presentation.
Can we vote on the 120, taking the funding out of the existing overlay?
Second?
She said.
She said.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. No more discussion on that. So now we're going to move forward to Mr. Rabbit.
Mr. Rabbit, we have a presentation from you on a 41(c).
Yes. Mr. Chairman, at your behest, I will try to be really brief. I won't read all this, but basically what we're asking is the town will vote to amend master general law 59 subsection 5 clause 41(c) as previously approved by the town of Lunenburg back in 101490, 1986. This thing's been sitting around and not been moved, and it's time to pay attention to it.
So just, I'm going to, if I can ask for clarification here, the town can't amend master general law, so I'm assuming that you mean here that we're looking to adopt?
The town adopted that back, the first pass before we're asking for the exemption. We can make exemptions to that number. The town voted, approved the law itself, and we put a series of numbers and exemptions in place at the time.
I, I, I think my comment, I'll be more clear. I think we're going to need to work with town council to modify, I see what you're proposing, I get it, but I think we may need to work with town council to modify the language because I don't, you know, to see if the town will vote to amend master general law. The town doesn't have the authority to amend master general law, but we can adopt a master general law.
Or we could amend the original vote taken to decrease the age limit part of the exemption.
Correct. But I, I think I get what you're saying, I'm just commenting that there's probably going to be a language revision here.
Okay. And just to finish it off, the Lunenburg Board of Assessors would move to amend exemption 41(c) age eligibility from 70 years of age to 65, allow them participation earlier. Just a quick background, as a result of working with this great team, you know, we disagree a little bit, but anyway, essentially, we went through all the exemptions, we became kind of quasi-experts in this, we looked at the planning analysis, and we determined that we had to make a move. We used a whole series of methodologies, we looked at the exemptions, 41, 41b, 41c, 41c and a half, the clause 31, and we have some other clauses that are in the works. But anyway, the exploration also included analysis of local towns, cities, exemption practices, actual Lunenburg senior exemption participation levels. We only, we're only really talking, right now, we're only processing 20 a year. We're asking, we're anticipating it's going to move up to 30. We looked at the federal census age profiles, life expectancy tables, as well as the American Community Survey poverty data, and that was presented by Sarah, that was better than mine. The NARA, National Association of Reivers, in terms of how long do you hold on to a house, a median household incomes, senior poverty levels within Lunenburg. And we also looked close, worked closely with the director of the Lunenburg Adult Activity Center, Ms. Dugard, and she was extraordinarily helpful in giving us insight. We worked her recommendations into ours, and so Sue did a really nice job. And honestly, having had a chance to look more closely at what even happened today, Deb, good work. Jane, I better say Jane, she's a vice chair, otherwise I'm really in trouble. But they're, they're, they're doing it. They're making a really good place for our seniors. Anyway, the results of the current state analysis, we were able to project senior participation levels, average financial cost, cost of the household, total cost of the town, and impacts to our senior citizens. And the BOA concluded that we really only had four options available to us, the first being do nothing since 1986. And basically, the age would stay at 70. The other option was to only raise the exemption compensations by another $250, from 750 up to 1,000, of which 500 would be contributed by the, by the state. The town would end up picking up the other 250 plus, they're currently receiving 250, plus an additional 250. The option, or we could try both of them at the same time, and that would be the last option. The, if we had done. The, if we had done nothing, right now, the town is spending per household $1.12 to keep this program, this portion of the program alive, and that would stay that if we did nothing. If we raised the exemption, the total household average cost would increase to $2.26. Remember, we're at $1.12, now we're going to $1.26, up a whole $1.14 for 20 or 30 people. Okay, reduce eligibility to 65, the average household cost would increase $1.69 or only .57 cents, that's what we're asking for here. And a combo, if we did the both, it'd be $2.26. I'd like to point out that .57 cents is about a quarter of a cup of coffee. That's all we're asking for anybody, a quarter of a cup of coffee from the citizens to help these 200. That's it. These are not big numbers. Okay. So, anyway, I'll keep going. A quarter of a cup of coffee.
Duncan, it's Starbuck.
Honestly, in terms of, if you look at where we sit from a percentage and if you go into the data tables, you'll know that Lunenburg is not a leader with regard to how well we're helping our seniors. We are not. Okay? Anyway, the team unanimously
That's a clarifying question. So, when we look at numbers, obviously, we don't look at cost per household, we look at the total dollar amount. So, as I'm understanding what you're saying, the option of doing nothing is $5,000 a year, which is our current
Which is correct.
Option of taking option number one, which is only raising the exemption an additional $250, that that would cost $10,000 a year. Option number two, which is reducing the eligibility to 65, would cost $7,500 a year, which is what I believe you're proposing today.
That's correct.
And then option number three, you have a note of combining the raising the compensation to 50 and then reducing the other thing. So, what you're asking the board, because I mean, the options aren't in front of us. So, what's in front of us, as I understand it, is if we are in agreement with reducing the retirement age from 70 to 65 for lower income seniors, the total cost of the town is $2,500 a year. You just commented that you can probably pay for it out of your overlay account. Is that the gist of the presentation? And the council of aging is in agreement?
It's not retirement age, it's eligibility.
Eligibility age, thank you, eligibility age.
So, if I could just, and then this is a plug I got to put in here, Michael.
Yep.
The BOT meeting honestly chose option two, lower the age eligibility.
What's the BOT?
BOA.
Board of Assessors, thank you.
My mouth is sticking. Option two represents the lowest cost of the household while assisting the most citizens. And I want to credit Sue Dari for saying, why don't we play it this way? And Sue was right. We're getting more people involved, we're helping them. The option is also going to provide us with a solid participation background because Brian and I spent some time going back and forth in terms of what do we think it's going to be, based on a whole series of parameters, from how long you hold the house, when are they going to die, what is all these other particulars, and we came up with, let's do this, let's plan on, most of the exemptions, we won't be signing very many for people over 85 because they won't own the home and all that stuff. So, I've also included a pile of comparison tables and I'm not going to read them. And you saw the part that got me and it is a result of signing these exemptions, I was amazed at how people can live, I really am. And we looked at, a chance to look at the poverty within our town, and essentially, 8.3% of our town is living below the poverty line.
Yeah, I think it's 25% of the student body population.
I'm sorry, Michael.
So, I believe it's about 25% of the student body population is poverty.
Exactly. Well, the student body population is 29.8% is living below poverty line, adults 18 to 64 is 43%, and 65, a total of 263 seniors, or 26% of them are living below poverty. And that's what's got me going.
And poverty by federal standards?
Okay, there's two standards here. Now, the federal standard is if you're bringing in, if you're single, you bring in $45,000 a year to your house. Remember, you're running the house, you're eating, you're paying taxes, all these other things. And for that matter, if you're married, you get to $61,000. The mass allowable income, they're coming back and saying, if the federal standard says $45,000, mass is saying $20,000. No help.
For this program.
For this particular program, right. And in terms of a marriage, you're only going to get 30. We owe it to the citizens to continue to explore. I'm looking at other options.
If I may stop you, Mr. Ra. So, does the board, members of the board require any more information to be able to make a determination on this request at this point?
This board?
Yes.
No.
No? Mr. Franco, do you need any more information to make?
I do not. I need no further information.
I think we can move forward on the information we've already received.
Okay.
So
I can make my plug, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Okay. Seniors, we're having, in our efforts to essentially be as open and as helpful as we possibly can, especially to this senior 41(c) population, we are having a conference at this Senior Activity Center, right there? We are. And it's, by the way, it's easiest spot, it's right next to the canvas and you at.
So, what's the, you're making the plug, what's the date?
Before I guess, okay, yeah. March 25. She does this all the time and she's right. Thank you. I love you. Thank you. Okay. So, March 25 at 3:00 p.m. And get in there, look at your property cards and, and not to disagree with my good, 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 good friend, there are a lot of other exemptions that we want to explore. And there's a financial hardship exemption. There's even an exemption where if we decide optional additional exemptions that we can entertain. And we want to continue to explore that and work with our Council on Aging to see what would work and what would be the best for us. And by the way, it doesn't necessarily just apply to seniors. There are people that'll get in trouble, where there's deferral options that we can employ, a wide array of things that we can help you with, the citizens. So, I'm You've come way off the presentation that we agreed to, so I don't know, it was actually included. You missed the back sneak snuck in.
So, if I may, I, we see the request for the warrant article. I move for the select board to accept the request as submitted and to provide it to Town Council to modify the language.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion? Is there going to be a roll call? Oh, sorry, Mr. Franco, do you have any additional discussion?
No, I have everything I need to decide this. I only just want to say for the record that we only are deciding the issue that was presented to us, but you would have easily had my support personally for option three, but that's beside the point. Let's vote on what is before us.
I concur. And so, this could be a roll call, vote Mr. Franco.
Aye.
Ms. Emke.
Aye.
And an aye for myself. So, what we'll do, we adopted, we're going to put this in the warrant, we're going to modify the language a little bit so that way it reads correctly and that way, you know, that way it reads correctly. So, I want to just thank, first of all, you know, Jack, I know I was kind of pushing you through this a little bit here, but I do want to thank you for the research and thought you put into this. I think that, you know, you approach things from a very thoughtful way with a lot of steps along the way and it very much so explains the thought process. And so, I think if you make this presentation available, it would be pretty clear on how you've arrived, where you've arrived. But again, I will second, I already did concur with what Mr. Franco said, that if the request was for the $10,000 additional cost, I would have supported that too. But we're only answering the question in front of us and we don't have time before the 18th to have a modified request. Yes?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but we're putting the warrant article before you. I believe you can modify the warrant article if you so choose.
We could. We could. You're correct. All right. Do we have any other, do we have any other, if you want to forward us that adoption with both parts, that'd be helpful. And then as well as prior, if you can do that prior to April the 2nd, that'd be helpful. So, as terms of, you know, if you guys have a meeting between now and then and then you guys are agreeing to fund this through an overlay, I think year one and then years beyond will be operational or what have you. I think what you've, again, we have a three-member board here tonight. I think we're all, I was looking at Renee's face, but we all seem to be in agreement that we all would support the option that would better support our senior families. Because we get it. Thank you, Brian. I want to give you the opportunity to make any final remarks and to conclude your meeting.
Can I add one comment before they leave?
To revise it.
Yes.
I don't know, there's I just want to take this opportunity to publicly thank the Board of Assessors and the staff in the Assessor Office for all of the hard work that has gone in these past several months, especially Brian and Sarah for stepping up and filling some unexpected vacancies. I know you knew it was going to be a lot of work, but I have a feeling it was even more than you expected. So, thank you very much for doing that and I think, I think you have done a lot to reestablish trust with the town. And I just want to take the opportunity to publicly thank the board and the department as well.
Thank you for those comments and, I don't, thank you for those comments and hear here to them. You guys have done a really great job. I know last year when we were faced with residents coming before us, I think there was some concern on my part over where the Board of Assessors was in the process. And I think I feel quite confident that whatever happens this year with abatements, that we can steer them your way, any residents of concern, your way, and that you guys are fully capable of handling and being aware of all the details that led into this. It's really helpful to see an engaged Board of Assessors. So, thank you and again, Brian, I'll give you the opportunity to conclude your meeting.
I think that concludes all the action that we had, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn the Board of Assessors meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
So, move. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move quietly. Thank you.
All right. So, next in our agenda, we have a manager report to the town manager for the town manager's report.
The first announcement is the warrant for the annual town meeting is currently open and for some issued articles until March 18 at 4:00 p.m. And annual town meeting is Saturday, May 4 at 9:00 a.m. For the existing board committee and commission vacancies, there is one vacancy in the Architectural Preservation District Commission, one vacancy until the next annual town election for the Cemetery Commission, one vacancy on the Council on Aging, two associate vacancies in the Green Communities Committee, one member-at-large vacancy in the Open Space Committee, and one vacancy on the Personnel Committee. Anyone interested in any of these positions can find the volunteer application forms on the website, complete them and return them to the Select Board's office. And if you have any questions on the roles and responsibilities, you can call our office at (978) 582-4130, extension 144. For employment opportunities for the town, there is a Conservation Administrative Assistant position for 10 hours a week, facilities custodian for 40 hours a week, land use director for 40 hours a week, planning board administrative assistant for 36 hours a week, seasonal cemetery laborers, seasonal lifeguards, temporary administrative assessing assistant for 32 hours a week. More information on these positions can be found on the town website as well under job opportunities. An update on 9/25 Mass Ave, which was one of my goals for this year and previous years, on Thursday, March 7, we had a site visit with Mass Development, their consultant from Beta Group, working on the real estate technical assistance project, our consultant, Joe McLoughlin, who's helped with all the environmental site assessments, the building commissioner and the facilities director. This site visit was for Mass Development and their consultant from Beta Group to get a visual on the property, take photographs, discuss the work that has been done to the property thus far, and some possible restrictions that would affect conceptual designs. We have a follow-up meeting this Thursday to review a build-out analysis from Beta. Update on bids and RFPs, the town received three bids in response to the road maintenance IFB and PJ Keating was awarded the bid. PJ Keating's bid came in approximately $127,000 lower than the office estimate, so the DPW director was happy with the bid result. We have a request for qualifications for owners' project manager services for Marshall Park that is due tomorrow. An invitation for bids for the Flat Hill Culvert Project, those are due on March 27. An invitation for bids for cleaning services for town buildings is due April 4. This is to recap, an email that I sent out as far as a budget update, if in case the public did not hear this at the school committee's meeting last night. Yesterday, I sent an email to the Select Board, Finance Committee, School Committee, Assessors, Superintendent and relevant staff that our fiscal '24 new growth was approved at $630,220. As explained previously, in the fall, an estimate was projected based on known new buildings and additions at that time, and we increased from the estimate before the special town meeting from $200,000 to $400,000 to conservatively capture additional new growth before the submittal of the pro forma recap. During the five-year revaluation project, additional new homes were captured that were not part of the estimate used in the fall, therefore resulting in a significant increase compared to the fall new growth figure. On March 4, I met with the school superintendent and the school committee chair and committed any additional new growth revenue to the school budget dependent on the final money tax assessment. The money tax school committee voted on their final budget last Wednesday and the assessment figure is the same as my preliminary budget figure. The only change was discussed that occurred after the March 4 meeting was that I learned the assessors were submitting an article, decrease the age for this presentation that we heard tonight, which would be a need to address the overlay account, which they did. So, the full $236,025.50, that is the new additional amount for the tax levy for fiscal '25, is being committed to the school budget. So, that's $230,220 in new growth that's increased from the fiscal '24 new growth amount, as well as it increases the 2.5% on top of that base by $5,805.50.
Thank you. Do you have any questions to the town manager? All right, here and now, old business. So, we are not going to discuss environmental policies tonight. Fiscal year 2024 budget, '25 budget, capital plan, annual town meeting warrant articles. Let's take a look at the warrant articles that have come in. And to the town manager for any updates here.
The only two articles at this, from last week, the Cemetery Commission submitted their annual article for the sale of cemetery lots to appropriate funds from that account. And that's letter S, to vote to appropriate the sum of $10,000 from the sale of cemetery lots to be used for the care, improvement, embellishment of the town cemeteries.
Okay. Do we put the placeholder in here? I didn't want to bore this.
Yes. Override? Yes. It's on H.
H. All right. So, I think that it may be wise for us tonight to
And I'm sorry, there was one other one. The school committee submitted an article to raise and appropriate or transfer from free cash, a sum of $82,119, to pay for network security upgrades at the Lunenburg Public Schools. That also stems from the meeting I had with the school superintendent and the school committee chair to recommend that, since that's a non-recurring expense, to remove it from the operating budget and we could pay for it out of free cash, available free cash.
So, it sounds as if, you know, there's kind of like two ways ahead of here and I want to be clear about. So, last week, when we discussed the override request, what I heard from every member on this board was that we were all going to support override going into the ballot and an override going into the warrant as well. We had differences in opinions or whether or not we would personally endorse it and support it, but we all felt as if it was an important question for the community to be able to resolve and to be able to answer. So, there needs to be some formality here in which we formally accept the language, you know? And I think the concern, I think, you know, I came into tonight thinking we weren't going to make any votes on this tonight because numbers are still moving. And then kind of at the beginning of the meeting, I was like, well, let's just formally do it to accept it. And I think the answer is we've already put the placeholder here. You know, we don't have to, on the warrant for us, it's not, we've already put the placeholder here, it's got to be there. We're going to do an override. We're going to do an override, and we're already committed to doing it at the number that the school committee provides to us, that that's what it's going to be for. So, what we're going to be looking to do is a meeting on end of the month, probably on about the week we don't normally meet. I'm looking at the chair of the school committee. We're to be looking to coordinate a meeting that week to really get the language correct and make sure for that meeting, we have the right language. So, just so everyone knows, the warrant closes on the 18th. Let me step back. Warrant closes on the 18th. The Select Board then has a couple of weeks to finalize things. And in that couple of weeks, and everything has to be finalized by April the 2nd. So, what we're saying is we're accepting it on to the warrant. What we're going to do over the next couple of weeks is finalize this language. And we'll be looking to have another meeting likely. I need to coordinate with other members of the board on their availability. But it's, but the target right now is the last week of the month that we don't normally meet, have a meeting of the Select Board just for this sole purpose, to get this language right, to formally adopt it at that meeting. Was there anything else as in our conversation to the town managers that we wanted to achieve at that meeting?
Just invite town council to also come to answer questions that may help eliminate any misunderstandings and confusion, as well as help with the process that we would be going forward at town meeting.
So, that gives us kind of two weeks then to kind of see from the request that we received, which we did receive a request from the school committee, a little over $1 million. I think it was $1,350,000 or something like that. $1,700,000, thank you. We did receive a request for $1,700,000. And so, what we'll do is as these numbers kind of move around over these next week or two, we'll see what that real number is, and then that's what we're going to put on the warrant. Is that, yeah? I'll ask Carol, Ms. Archibald, if you mind coming forward. If you have any questions on what I'm saying and why.
While she's coming up, it's, we can finalize all the language except for the number, right?
Tonight?
No, 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 no.
No.
Well, before the 26th, before the March 26th.
So, yes.
I mean, basically, we just, the number would be the last bit to add in. I don't want to miss a deadline just because we're wordsmithing.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, my question is, I thought the ballot had to be submitted by the 19th.
It's the warrant.
It's, I think what Sergeant Bell is saying is, our policy is 60 days, where the board's policy is 60 days prior to the annual town election. So, it's, that's to give enough time to finalize the board to take their vote, official vote, at a meeting. That language then gets submitted in writing to the town clerk, who then has time to put it into their printer for the ballots. But I did speak with the town clerk, and the April 2nd date would be the last date to do that, and that would be sufficient time for her.
Okay, that was my one question.
And we will put it on the ballot?
Yes, yes. You had said you were going to. I, I had every, every expectation that that is what was going to happen. I had just heard there was something about certifying questions, and they had to go into Boston, that questions were different than people's names on the ballot. And you obviously would know that, not me, so.
I had emailed the town clerk after the last meeting as far as timeline, and she confirmed that date was sufficient because the caucus is the 25th.
Right.
And, yeah.
So, in our own policy, just to explain it, and I'm really explaining to everyone at home, I think you already know this. I didn't see Lou's hand up. Mr., I'll finish what I'm saying, then I'll call Lou. We give ourselves enough time because sometimes, like as we were just discussing with the Board of Assessors, where they submit a warrant that is saying for the town to amend master general law, where we're like, ah, that probably needs to be changed. But if we get this, and we don't have any more meetings, we don't have any more time, then what do you do? You kind of have to exclude it at that point. So, we've kind of built into our policy some leeway for ourselves so that way we can make these modifications as they come in. That's, and, and afford enough time so that we staff are not crunching at the last possible minute to get everything ready for the printers and done.
Okay.
So, we're, I think we're walking on the same path here, that we're in agreement on the override. I know that the board needs to make its recommendations as part of the booklet in terms of where the board recommend approval or disapproval of that. And that's, it may be helpful for you to be here for the conversation or a representation to be here when we look to have that. Because I know, I know how important it is for you guys to get the endorsement of the Select Board. And so, let's make an effort at it.
Yes.
So, we'll make an effort at it at the, toward the end of the month. And off the top of your head, do you, do you know of any schedule limitations the last week of March for yourself?
Tuesdays are never good for me.
I know.
At all, but it, that, whatever.
How are Thursdays?
You can't do that Thursday.
That's the public hearing.
Oh, oh, yeah, that's right, that's right, that's right, yeah. Okay.
And I already confirmed with town council, it is available until the 26th.
Okay, 6.
26th, 7th.
Do we have a time, 7?
7th.
So, all right. I, I do understand. Hopefully, the vice chair will be here and.
We'll do what we can.
Thank you, thank you, Carol. All right. So, at this point, we have up till, oh, Mr. Franco, Mr. Franco, I'm sorry. Ms. Archibald, you may want to come back in case Lou has a question for you.
Actually, I don't, I don't have any questions for Ms. Archibald. So, two quick things. Effectively, I mean essentially, this is our board's policy, this 60-day thing. We're effectively waiving or suspending our own policy, correct?
That is in effect, correct.
Do you see any value, and, you know, I just putting this out for discussion, do you or Ms. Emke see any value in having an explicit vote that we are suspending our own or our own policy for the purposes of taking this under advisement? So that, you know, for the purpose of completing this work, so that there's no future question as to validity of what we're doing after this 60-day window?
What are your thoughts?
To quote the town manager, the vote's always good.
I like head nods, Lou, I like head nods. But, do you want to make the motion?
Okay, that's another question. So, I move that the Select Board expressly suspend its policy regarding the 60 days requirement, the requirement for 60 days notice prior to putting a question on the ballot for the purposes of finalizing the work that's ongoing.
Second.
All right, any additional discussion? All right, this could be roll call, Mr. Franco.
Aye.
Ms. Emke.
Aye.
And an aye for myself. Policy suspended.
The second thing I had is that, I, maybe this is public comment at the end, but it's totally related. But, so, cut me off if you, if you see fit. But I just want to assure the public, you know, that they understa, actually, this is a good place for this. So, we have, we do, and I think members of the public in their comments and in their asks understood this, but I just want to generally get it out there. The question of whether or not we're putting this on the, on the warrant and on the ballot is separate from the question of whether we are individually supporting it and recommending approval. That's separate vote and a separate discussion. But I do want members of the public to understand that it's a little premature. Just because we haven't gone on record yet individually, at least speaking for myself, that we are supporting this or not supporting it, nothing should be read into that. It's just responsible to wait until it's finalized and there is actually something with written, total finalized numbers. It's totally crystallized what it is we are support, recommending approval for or not recommending approval for. And therefore, I am suspending my, any indication at this time as to what I'm going to do until that's actually finalized. Now, that may just be a formality, but that's the way I think it needs to be.
Thank you, Mr. Franco.
Do you want me to do my comment now?
Yes.
Okay. I actually wrote things down because I've had so many things going through my head lately that I don't know if I'm coming or going. So, I didn't want to forget anything.
Thank you.
So, as everyone knows, this is my first budget season on the Select Board. Yay! The downside of that is I have a big learning curve. Okay, especially this year, given all the challenges everyone's well aware of. Because we have now arrived at discussion of an override. Something a lot of people actually in town know nothing about, have never been through before. So, I'm not alone. So, how have I addressed that learning curve? I've gone to every single finance committee meeting, seen every single budget presentation, gone to all the school committee meetings. And, and actually, I want to pause and thank our finance committee and school committee members because they were at each other's meetings as well. And there was a lot of time they spent preparing for their meetings, and I know they looked at as many spreadsheets as I have, probably more. And I even watched the Board of Assessors meetings just to follow on how the reevaluation was going. I've asked a lot of people, a lot of questions, members from other committees, those who have more experience on these issues than me, the town manager, all to try to get a better understanding of the process and the options when it comes to municipal budgets because they are very different than budgets in the workplace, the private workplace. Now, the upside to being a new kid on the block is that I'm approaching this without any bias, no preconceived notions, no emotional ties to any budget. So, I'm taking a very analytical, holistic approach to looking at the budget for FY '25. And I really want to stress holistic. I have heard many times, and I done it, I found myself doing it too, and I want to stop doing it, saying town side, school side, there are no sides. This is, we have one budget for the town. That budget consists of a lot of line items, one for every department, one of which is a school. Now, the fact that the school budget takes up about half of the total budget feeds into that, you know, that, that divide of this school side, town side, us versus, there is no us versus them. Us versus them is on the athletic field, it's between the lines, that's it. So, I wanted, I'm going to try to make a conscious effort to change my language going forward when it comes to different budgets, and, and I hope others do the same. So, some might, might say I don't have kids in school, so I don't know what it's like. I don't know, you know, how important schools are, what the current situation is, how difficult it is. Well, I want to assure you, that's not the case. I don't have kids in school. I don't even have kids, okay? The only dependents I've ever had are four-legged, tail-wagging, furry kinds of dependents, okay? But I understand the value of an education. From pre-K to grad school, I have, I, it's scary. I was a student for like 25 years. So, I've been on that side, obviously, as everyone who has gone to school has. But I also have, I'm very close to my niece and nephews who have gone through schools in different towns, and, and I've, you know, talked to their parents, my, my brother, sister-in-laws, about their experience in different schools. I have a lot of family members who either were, had careers in education, or still do to this day, ranging from elementary to college level, teachers to admins. I actually, there's a receptionist at the gym I go to who's a second grade teacher in Concord. I actually talked to her after class the other day to ask her what her experience is. What's it like working with a paraprofessional? What do they do? So, I am, I am trying to learn as much, edit any resource, I'm just, I'm annoying people with questions at this point. So, what I've been focused on this past few weeks in going to all these presentations is trying to find ways to close the gap from the town manager's preliminary budget, which everyone's been calling a 2.94, I think it's now up to 3.94, to the needs base. Because I think that, that might be attainable, or at least we can get close, I hope, I think, I hope. The, the school department has already, or school committee has already voted that they do not support the preliminary budget of 2.94. So, why am I trying to close the gap? One is to reduce the amount of override that, that ends up going on the warrant and the ballot. Because I want to reduce the burden on the taxpayers. This reevaluation we just did, I, I went through, I was really happy they provided spreadsheets. 13.5% of the residential properties in town are seeing a 20% or more increase in their assessed values. So, that's over 560 households. So, their tax bill is going to go up. An override's going to be an additional hit. And honestly, I don't know if they know it's coming, or it could come. Because in my conversations with people, just like, hey, you want to go to dinner tonight? And I say, no, I, I want to go to the, the finance committee, they're going to be talking about the override. Do you know that some people, more than once, I got the question, what's an override? And then just about everybody said, oh, what's the override for? So, it's clear that there are people, for whatever reason, aren't following school committee. They're not even following any of the budget conversations in town, okay? So, this is, this is going to come to a shock at some people because it's going to hit their wallet. So, you know they're going to pay attention then. I think people have a general sense that the budget is tight. But, I mean, isn't the budget always tight? Do you ever get enough money to do everything you want, when you want to do it? No, that's not life. So, I don't think they realize though, just how tight it is and the fact that we are talking about overrides. The other reason I'm trying to close that gap is if the override doesn't pass, school committee has already said the preliminary budget is absolutely not doable. I'm hoping if we can get too close to the needs base, it'll be not ideal, not what everybody wants, doesn't have everything everybody wants. But if the override doesn't pass, I'm, I'm hoping that if we can get to that needs base, it, it will be doable, at least for a year. So, getting back to the holistic view, this is my struggle. The, the fact that the override would go to the school budget only, I don't mean only the school budget, I mean solely the school budget, is a little concerning. I, if the override amount, and this has come up at school committee too, and I know there's other members who, who feel like this, the number that we put on the ballot, if it ends up being more than what is needed to get to the level service eser cuts, we can't take that extra and, and put it somewhere else to another need in town. My understanding is we can't write the warrant article that way, like, hey, we're going to have, here's our override, give to the school department whatever they need to get to this level, and anything left over can go to other departments. My understanding is that's not how these overrides work or can be written. Because I think everybody can agree, there are needs throughout town. There are so many needs. We, we hear about them, we've heard of them even recently, you know, the sal, this issue of salaries across all departments, the municipal buildings. I'm on stormwater task force, so I've always got like water and stormwater on my mind. You know, stormwater utility, that's something we're talking about. So, I'd really love to see a collaborative effort among the school committee, finance committee, Select Board, superintendent, town manager, all the key players to look at holistic view of the needs of the town. And if an override is needed to address those, you know, a longer-term plan, not just a quick fix, a, a longer-term plan to address these, to bring that forward. And I think there would be an appetite for that because it would, everyone could benefit from that, everybody. Now, that's not something that can be done in a couple of months. I mean, the clock's been against us since, since go here. So, that, that's not something that can be done for this town meeting. So, what can be done? So, let me get back to closing the gap. I've sent questions, ideas about specific line items and things to both the superintendent and the town manager, trying to learn, you know, where, where can we trim? Where can we reduce? What can we do to try to close the gap? So, this, this gets me to, to an action item. I mentioned I may have an action item. I would like at our next, at next week's Select Board meeting, if we could discuss the ARPA funds in terms of using ARPA money to fund the cybersecurity upgrades and the 9/11 compliance upgrades for the school. So, that, that would amount to an additional $145,000. So that, that would amount to an additional $145,000 to take off the school. I think getting that new growth, oh my god, great, like, when was the last time we ever got good news, like, unexpected good news like that? I mean, that almost cut the, the gap to the needs base in half. So this, this is something I'd like us to discuss, because I think having, rather than having it come out of free cash, where it goes to the town floor for a vote, I, I would feel a lot better having that, if it were, if the select board were to agree and vote to allocate the ARPA money. That just tightens up the number going into town meeting, nice, clean, we know where we stand. Then, and the ARPA, the other thing that could be on the table is with respect to ARPA, because that's the only checkbook I have, is the sidewalks. We had given the schools $101,640, I think, towards sidewalks. This, of course, if the school would be amenable to it, and if there was something on the school budget that could be used, because, you know, ARPA can't go for salaries and things like that, has to be a one-time expense, if we could look at that, because now I'm wondering if chapter 90 could be used for sidewalks that are near the roads, or if ARPA could be used for any of the repairs that are, have been proposed for the schools. So if we could have an ARPA discussion next week, what our options are, and anything that can, that can be done to get us closer. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Mr. Franco, do you have any?
And sorry, Lou, I know you're on vacation, I took, you know.
No, it's quite all right. I just want to thank you, Renee, for those comments, because, and I'm addressing you by first name personally on that, because, because I think one of the benefits of, not that I've been around forever either, I certainly haven't, but you, it's, that's the value of fresh perspective, like, that you are looking at this with a fresh set of eyes, and I just really appreciate the thinking that you're, you're doing. I, I know you have been to those meetings in person mostly. I've been to a lot of them myself, most, mostly remotely, not, not all of them, but not all of them remotely, but, I know, I passed you on, one night on the, on my way out, I watched remotely, you were on your way in, I think it was like a four-hour meeting that night. Last week was brutal. But I just appreciate your comments there, and your fresh perspective and creative thinking.
That's all. Renee, I'm, you know, you're very detailed, you're very thorough, it's, it's pretty clear that you've really invested a lot of energy trying to get up to speed. You know, I know that, you know, I watch from home, or I'll watch it on YouTube, several meetings after the fact, but it's always good for members of the select board to be at school committee meetings, to be at finance committee meetings. I know that we can reliably depend on you to be there for us, and that you're a resource for the members with questions on kind of what happens. So thank you, Renee, for, you know, the work you're doing, taking the role as seriously as you are, and trying to be the best public servant you can be. So I don't have any additional comments tonight. I've committed to the schools, that I will not, I think it's important, actually, I mean, I will offer this comment, I think it's important, as, as a member of the select board, and sitting in the role as chair, I, I don't see myself as any one other than another member of the board, and that I just happen to facilitate meetings. But I know, and work on the agenda, but I know that there's a public perception, right, of the seat, and so, and I'm, I'm aware that there's public perception of, of the seat. So I don't, you know, in my role, I honestly hope that the school committee feels as if I have worked to be collaborative, that I have worked to reach out on many occasions to ask for input, to work together, you know, and, and I've, I've made it no shame that I give a lot of praise to the residents, to the students who graduate from the school system. I really prioritize that, when, when residents are before us, and, and, and showing what is a bit of preference for our own residents all the time, and I support the schools. So I recognize that it's not, in this discussion, I'm not going to harm, so, I mean, I'm not going to harm, you know, and I think I made it pretty clear last week where I stand. So I will not harm, and, and that's where I'm at. So I know that there's a lot that needs to happen over the next couple of months, and there needs to be a clear causation explained to the, to the population, and there also needs to be a clear explanation of, of result, of what does the town get in exchange for the override, what is, what is the town getting out of it, why is it needed? And then causation, how do we get here? You know, I, I think that, on the surface, you know, the simple, the simple question that, that everyone has to answer is the historical one, is, you know, over the last 20 years, our town population has increased by 20% everywhere. We've increased customers, there's more customers, so to speak, for DPW, there's more customers at the police department, there's more customers at the fire department, there's more customers everywhere. And the school department has, has, the customers are about the same. And so I think there needs to be a good explanation about cost increases. You know, we don't have insight into the disproportionate, what's being explained as disproportionate cost increases in the school side, I, I know we said we're not, we're going to try to say side, in the school department. So I think there's just a need over the coming weeks and months to provide clarity on causation, on causation, on result. And then the nagging question in everyone's mind is, are we going to be in the same position next year, and kind of what those mitigating controls are? So, you know, again, I will, those are the questions, those are, that's it, but in this role, given, given where I stand, and I will not cause harm, but I will minimize, you know, I don't have, you know, I'm, I'm eager to hear, I'm eager for this meeting that we just discussed, I'm eager for more information, so, and I will remain eager for more information. So we are expecting some warrants to come in, I do have one other comment. So one thing came up, you know, in this time, we're talking about, you know, this is, these are challenging years, I mean, what we just heard from the board of assessors tonight was, and you mentioned it, Selectman Mkey, that several people, I think the number you just said was about 20% of the town, was that correct?
Thirteen and a half percent.
Thirteen and a half, we're going to see a 20% increase?
20% or more increase in assessed value, just for residential property.
Yep. And, and as you were looking at that, was that, was that capturing the condo users as well, that are going up 30% plus?
Oh, yeah.
All right. So, you know, that's a lot of homes that are going to see a, a pretty substantial increase. I appreciate you taking the holistic view. So, you know, I know that we have to sort through several things, you know, we have to sort through our, our, a couple of things we already had on the horizon was, was resolving this multi-year effort to address the paid problems that we have across town. I've never spent so much time on a school budget, but I know that, you know, our average salary for our admins in every department is generally about 48 grand, but the school department's about 20,000 higher than that. And so those are like jobs where we need to bridge some gaps. Something that just recently came to our attention was about even our, our paid leave policy, that if, if people have the birth of a child, they have to take unpaid sick time. Whereas, you know, we know that in the, in the school department, that it's a paid sick time, and we need to move in that direction. It is just wrong. It's wrong to have employees work for our community, understand that they're, that they are accumulating sick time, understanding that the reproduction of our species is critical to our species, and to not afford people who have time accumulated the ability to use it for the birth of a child. To me, that's problematic, and so we need to address that, but that's going to cost money. And so all these things, I think, you know, we have to put it from a holistic lens. I, I believe the strongest human bond on the planet is the bond between a parent and their child. There's simply nothing stronger than that. And I recognize that, I'm aware of it, it's not lost on me on any day. But I know that we have a lot that we need to sort through over these next couple of weeks, and, and provide our town with an opportunity to make votes and decisions. So I, I am looking for personnel to come to us with the modification to a bylaw that specifically prohibits the use of sick time for the birth of a child, that we do have that as a bylaw, that you're not allowed to do it. And so we need to, we need to modify that, so that way that's corrected, we, we simply can't have that. And to me, that's, that certainly is something that's high priority for us to address, as well as understanding what those unintended consequences of those changes could be, so that way we're making rules in a smart and effective way. All right, so the warrant closes on Monday, so our next meeting is on the 19th to discuss that, and we should have most of them in by that point, and then we can kind of walk through them and hopefully start that process. All right, I'm just looking at what we have next on our agenda, and I think we are nearing the end. So we don't have any minutes to approve, do we have some, no, those don't, we have any warrant, yep. It's a kind of a paid second.
Are we just going to skip the upcoming vacancy list?
Uh, did the town manager do that? No, upcoming vacancies?
No, that's your annual list.
Oh, yeah, our annual thing. So part of our current is annual thing, so every year we review the list of upcoming vacancies in boards and committees for fiscal year '25, I do want to push that to next week. If that's okay with everyone, with Lou, are you okay with me pushing that to next week? Yes, okay. All right, well, let's start with the, first one, let me see what this is. We have an accounts payable warrant in the amount of $355,054.87. We have accounts payable warrant in the amount of $699,281.70. We should have payroll, right? Yep. Hope this doesn't make too much sense. All right, we have a payroll warrant in the amount of $985,077.55. Looks like we hired someone recently. Do we have any action items beyond the ones noted? Renee, we will add that to the next week's agenda.
Um, an action, maybe, I forgot this question. Is, is it planned to give, I know at special town meeting, there was a plan update on the municipal building plan, that was passed over because I think time was running.
Yeah.
Is it planned for this town meeting? I know you're not going to be there, so I'm thinking maybe not.
It won't be me, but.
Oh, someone will, okay.
We should, is planned to be on the.
Okay, because if not, I was going to ask if we could do that at a April meeting.
Yep, we can. All right, any other action items, Mr. Franco?
No, I just want to say, but if I could go back for a second, I can, I'll be Thursday, I'll drop my signature on those warrants on Thursday.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Community reports?
I missed a council on aging meeting this morning, I'll get a debrief from chairperson Debbie Lincoln, and I'll do the update next week. Yeah, that's all.
Is there a pancake breakfast tomorrow?
I believe there is, I got the notice on my phone.
It's the second Wednesday, right?
Yes, yes, thank you, breakfast, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, I don't have any, it's the school committee.
Well, I think we're all tracking.
Something about a budget, I don't know.
All right. Okay, I don't have any tonight, any upcoming meetings. So we are looking to meet again on March the 19th, we're looking to have a special meeting on the 26th, that meeting is tentative right now, and we need to confirm the schedules with the other members of the board, but the intent is for that to be a meeting to discuss in more detail, the language and of the ballot, and the language for the override. All right.
So I can offer the 25th, I don't know, 26 works for me, but I, I don't know if the 25th is an option, if we can't get a quorum.
It's the caucus.
Oh, that's the caucus, never mind.
And the planning board has their hearing on their articles that night.
Never mind.
Okay. All right, any public comments, even from the town manager?
None tonight, thank you.
All right, any public comments from the public?
I, actually.
Pause.
I do want to say something. The park commission was notified that they did receive the grant that they applied for, million-dollar grant, so I did want to congratulate them on all their hard work on that grant's mission.
That's a big deal.
Yes.
Yep, that's another million and a half dollars for the community, I think between the two so far. And so, so now we're at two and a half million dollars in funding for Marshall Park, and none of it has come directly from the taxpayers of Wimber. Indirectly, of course, but not directly.
There would be a required, town meeting vote, that would be in the fall, related to it, though.
Okay. All right, any public comments from the public? Sybil, good to see you. No, 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 you sent, you sent us an email, it's good to see you. It's good to see you engaged.
Thank you. Sybil Coffin, 27 Oak Ave, the bright blue house.
Oh, you're, that house is beautiful.
Thank you.
I, I used to see that on my way to school as a kid, and I was like, that house is beautiful.
Thank you. We'll always see my two boys playing outside, rain or shine. So I really appreciate the opportunity to rebut some of the things that I've heard tonight. I have to lodge an official comment about the language of the article being complicated, or I want anyone listening to this meeting to know, it's two to three sentences long, the override article. It is not complicated language, there are plenty of things we can copy and paste, it is, it's not tough. What we're talking about, and I think what you're talking about when you talk about language, is the number. We know exactly how that article is going to be framed, it's the number. So are we talking about the school committee's number, or are we talking about school committee plus what the town needs? We have citizens ready to go, we're ready to go to file this petition. We know that we can file a petition and also have our article up for a vote at the same time as yours. So what's it going to be? Are we going to have two? Because we put our trust in you to actually come up with the language and a number, and I really appreciate Member Mkey talking about cooperation between FinCom and school committee. Other towns are FinCom, school committee, and the select board. I'm asking you, the select board, virtually and, and present, to make it a trio, come up with a number that we as citizens can get behind. We'll get behind school committee's number if we need to, we'll get behind town's number if we need to, but please be a united front. Okay, I'm going to make sure I covered all my notes. And one other thing is, I keep hearing descriptions of non-school department needs, but I don't see a number coming from you. So again, it goes back to, are we voting on the school committee number, or are we combining and voting for the town? I'm ready to vote for an override. I would love it if we could get a unified front as a town for what that number needs to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any other public comments from the public? Any public comments from the board? No. We've gotten a lot of emails, I'll be very brief. TJ, I see you, I wanted to thank you for your, your email in particular, I think it was, it was, it gave me a lot of pause. We've gotten a lot, a lot of emails, and I'm not sure what it was about yours, but somewhere around the second half of it, it really, it really hit me pretty hard. So, you know, I just want to, I want to acknowledge first, you know, government is not, we're not all going to agree, but we need to be respectful to one another in our process of disagreement. And I hope that despite, you know, opinions we may have, that, that our residents at home find this board to be professional, find us to have a variety of viewpoints, but also to be respectful to the residents who've put us in these seats, who come before us with requests. And I also want to acknowledge the great work that I think a lot of people at home who ordinarily don't get involved in politics, it, it really speaks to, but are getting involved now, I think it speaks to democracy and the value of democracy, having the ability to get your voice heard. You know, a lot of times, you know, I sat at home and I didn't get much involved in government until someone was proposing a Gillette-sized weed farm in my backyard, and that was what got me out of my house to say, whoa, 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 what is going on here? And so what I would encourage is, once you start getting involved, you realize how complicated all of this stuff is. Coming onto this board, I will be very clear, it took me a whole term to learn it, because as, as Selectman Mkey mentioned, there's a cycle to all this, and it takes a while to learn the cycle and to start having opinions about what can be better. So I just want to thank everyone at home for their engagement, you know, it, it is, it is part of the process, and let's stay respectful in the process. We're going to hear from a lot of people over the coming months about their concerns, and you know, there's going to be finger pointing, especially as we get close to an election and, and to town meeting, and it's going to be a lot of this, a lot of this person should have, a lot of that person should have, you know. and, and I'm gonna be guilty of some of it probably privately myself. Um, you know, but I think it's important to, to be mindful, that we are a community, we land in situations together, we get out of them together, um, and we have to work together. So, you know, we have to work together. So on, I, I want to thank all the departments that put a lot of work into, you know, a multi-year plan, understanding some budgetary limitations, and coming up with a multi-year plan to resolve problems. The multi-year plans are how we've addressed our roads, the multi-year plans are how we've addressed, um, our, our police department, um, with reduced staff, with how we've addressed our, uh, fire department. Um, sometimes when we look at big costs, we need, we, we have a multi-year approach. You know, I, I encourage some efficiencies as we go forward. I encourage some efficiencies as we go forward, and overlap, minimizing duplicative services amongst departments. Um, that if, if there's a dollar to save, let's save it, um, and let's save it. So that's my comment, that's it. I want to thank everyone for participating in the process. Thank you, Mr. Franco, for allowing us to meet today by joining us from vacation and being a critical part of our quorum this evening. I know I said to you, my goal was to be out of here by eight, and, uh.
Well, if it's any, if it's any consolation, I knew that was never going to happen.
Well, in part because of me, and then the other part was when I saw that we were meeting with the Board of Assessors tonight, um, and I was like, "Jack, you gotta keep it brief." So, but no, I, I really, um, think all, think of all of our members for the process, and that's it. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, any additional discussion? Uh, this is gonna be a roll call, vote Mr. Franco.
Was that seconded? I'll second it, and I will say aye.
Mr. Franco, seconded and said aye, Miss Mkey, and an aye for myself. The time is nine thirty-five, and we are adjourned. For those at home, have a wonderful evening, and we will see you same time, same place next week. Have a good night.